I invite you to join with me in the invitation. Dear Lord, we come to you asking a healing prayer for our country. Be with our officials that suffer from the sickness of a dreaded disease. Grant us compassion for those less fortunate. Show us the way to make their lives less difficult and more fulfilling. Strengthen our schools, the teachers, and the students that need your intervention to find ways to improve the many problems that face our students. Guide them to know the comfort of your touch and healing hands. Teach us to look for the ways to find unity in a world torn with much discord. Continue to hold us in your hands as we walk through life with the gifts you have given us. In your holy name we pray, amen. Councilman tonight is wearing shirts that support Public Power Week. This week is Public Power Week, and normally we would be doing programs for our schools and going to some of our less needy and doing work in their houses. Unfortunately, we can't do those programs, but we are continuing to do as much as we possibly can with Public Power Week. One of the things we will be doing, you'll be seeing a banner flying at various different locations honoring our heroes in this COVID response. Also, Public Power, the city is one of, I think, 19 cities. They're only a portion of a nuclear plant. So all the power we produce is clean power. We very much appreciate our commercial and residential customers. It's for you, you keep our business living and allow us to do the things we do in our community. We thank you very much. Number three, special presentation. Presentation of City of Albemarle Retirement Certificate to David Whitley, 15.91 years of service. David, if you will come up here and stand in front of this monitor, I'm going to read it here and then I'm going to come out. Can you bring Ellen with you? If she ignores me, get to stand right there and I'll come out there in just a minute. In appreciation, this certificate of appreciation is presented to David E. Whitley, who on April 1st, 2020, retired from employment with the City of Albemarle after 15.91 years of loyal and faithful service. On behalf of the citizens of Albemarle, the mayor and city council have authorized this certificate and extend best wishes for a well-earned rest and a long and happy life. David has served as Laborer 1, Equipment Operator 1, Equipment Operator 2, and Utility Maintenance Operator. David, we thank you for all that you have done for the city. Number four, considered approval on September 21st, 2020, regular and closed DMS. Motion by Councilmember Hall, opposed by Councilmember Albrecht. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. We'll move into public hearing. Number five, considered application of Albemarle Downtown Area Revitalization, the ADR grant. This is a grant being asked for by the Urban Heart Exchange LLC. If you don't know, they have purchased the old ladder apartment building and are in the process of making it a residential apartments. Several years ago, council adopted a grant program that allows where somebody upgrades the value of a building, we give them a grant in the amount that they typically upgrade that we would receive. Simplified, if a building's worth $300,000 now and in the end $6 million, we would give them the difference of that in grant. But first, they have to pay that to the city and then we turn around and reimburse it after that. So the city actually loses any money. We just wait five years to start making our profit on that building. This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please go forward.
May the public hearing be closed.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, opposed to public hearing. Second by Councilmember Albrecht. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Council, what you've approved is for us to do the grant, but we will not know the exact figure until after he completes all of the construction. That will be an annual payment, once a year, for five years after it's all completed. And it'll be based on the difference in the tax value today and the tax value when he completes the...
Point of order.
Yes, ma'am.
Point of order. We just voted on closing the party.
Move approval of the...
Motion by Councilmember Bragman to approve the grant.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Number six is another public hearing. Considered, T.A. 2002, Amending Uses in the Central Business District. Mr. Robinson, you want to present that?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, this is being proposed to, you know, see different things. One, our comprehensive plan, as well as the definition of CBD in our zoning ordinance right now. And then also other plans such as the Streetscape Plan, Pedestrian Plan, Pedestrian Scale, Businesses and Activity. So this is meant to try to bring our CBD zoning district a little bit more in line with that. As well, we do have some concern with a lot of the used car dealerships and stuff that we get up and down 52, 24, 27. I think we have a lot of land available for that in the city. Right now, I think it's over 20% of the city's land is owned to allow for that. And this is only about, CBD is only about 1 or 2% of the land, so it's not really going to take much of that out. But this would allow for, kind of take that out and allow for some other uses to come in on some of those properties as they become available. I would propose, of course, that this be grandfathered in for existing businesses that we have in the city, in the city limits right now, in CBD limits.
Councilmembers, may remember there was some concern expressed about this occurring in the downtown with all we were trying to do, especially on some property that has basically had some old buildings torn down and someone gets a used car off, and we were trying to abolish that. Council expressed that interest, but council staff has brought that to us tonight. Comments, questions, and Mr. Robinson?
Just with, and maybe you're sure going to talk about this in a moment, but I do know that planning and zoning took, looked at this last week. Isn't that right?
Yes.
And do you have any comments to...
Oh, yeah, thank you. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'm just detailed there.
You're right. They did recommend for approval of this. There was some discussion back and forth, and they actually decided they wanted to add in farm machinery and equipment into this also. That was not staff's original proposal. We were going to present that to you tonight. However, after talking with city manager and city attorney, we were a little bit more specific in our advertisement. We specifically said automobiles rather than just saying the section. So what I would propose would be to consider this tonight and then later on, when we go back into make other changes to CBD later on, we could add that in at that time.
So their comments will not be part of tonight's approval? Basically, that's it?
They recommended for approval of all of these and added one on to it. We have not added that one on to it. This was the original draft that we're proposing to you guys. And again, it's something I have no problem bringing it back to y'all. We just couldn't put the advertising the way we did it.
Mr. Robinson, looking at the first item under the uses that are permitted, accessory buildings, is that basically like storage buildings?
It's associated with the business, yeah.
Associated with the business. Okay, all right.
Your question. Tell them in just a minute. Whoever's on the phone, would you please mute your phones on your end? Thank you. Go ahead, Chris. I'm sorry, I'm getting a call. The grandfathered businesses that would be downtown, what's the parameters of that? If an existing grandfathered business has new owners, someone purchases that existing business, is that still grandfathered?
Yeah, the way grandfathered non-conforming uses works is it's tied to the land, not to ownership. So the way that we have it right now in our ordinance is there's 180-day clause there. If they were to discontinue the use or go out of business, there'd be 180 days for another business to come in and take over that use and continue it. After that 180 days, it's no longer legal non-conforming. You would have to change something else. And that would also apply to expanding the business as well. They cannot expand the footprint of that business as it exists right now.
So that really hasn't changed, just that 180 days of...
That's something we apply to everything after they're in existence. So if it's in existence, if you were to adopt it tonight or later on, then whatever's in existence at that time, that would be grandfathered.
Further comments, questions, Robinson? Anyone else care to speak for or against?
May the public hearing be closed.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, opposed to public hearing. Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
We approve of ordinance 2025.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve the ordinance 2025. Second by Councilmember Whitley. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Under agenda adjustments, I have nothing to add. We will not be doing the one we originally had talked about for the ABC because the gentleman, Mr. Lewis, will not be here tonight. I have an announced delegation, administrative report, which was given, number seven. Number eight, Maryland Wells Waste Management to discuss loose leaf collection and recycling service.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for letting me come in. I have to say, it's nice to see you. I've been following you online. So it's nice to be here, and I'm glad everyone's doing well. I'm excited to say we do have the leaf season starting. That will start in two weeks. We had a notice in the paper yesterday or over the weekend, and then we'll do the same thing next weekend just so we can make sure we touch as many residents as possible. And then we'll have a leaf collection beginning on October 19th. Does anybody have any questions? You may have already seen it, but it's similar to what we've done in the past. Of course, the leaf season collection, we have divided into 12 zones within the city, of which two of those zones have more than mature trees. So we dedicated the peak times, extra time to service those areas. And then we will have the drivers that we had last year. We have experienced drivers who already know the routes within the leaf collection in the city, running those routes. We're ready to get started, ready for some fall weather. And as the weather comes, the trees start changing, we'll see some of those leaves dropping, and we'll see the season begin. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question with that.
Absolutely. On recycling, I wanted to share with you all. Obviously, during this time of the pandemic, we've seen a significant increase in overall collection, of which the greatest increase we've seen actually is in recycling. Looking at numbers, just to share with you, we have collected overall over 800 tons more year-to-date this year than last year. So with every additional amount of tonnage is also additional collection time and so forth. Our biggest surge was in recycling. And recycling, just to look at it from 2019 to 2020, we've had a 38% increase in recycling. So the citizens are definitely on board. The only thing we ask is also continue to look at, and that's why I think y'all have seen it before, but just continue to look at what's going in those recycling bins so that we can keep that contamination level down, which is very, very important. During this pandemic, there's a lot of materials that actually have been needed. So when you look at, for example, cardboard, obviously, a lot of people are shopping online. They're having those things shipped. Grocery stores use a lot of cardboard when they're having their materials. And so a lot of those materials have been put to use. Masks and PPE equipment, plastics, a lot of that has come from recycled materials. So we want to encourage the citizens to continue recycling to what we call recycle right. So even though we've seen it, we're going to ask that we don't have the bags in the recycling carts, we don't have wood, we don't have dirty diapers, we don't have food waste. What we really want are obviously the cardboard, the plastic bottles, milk jugs, detergent, you know, your washing detergent, containers, metal canned foods, glass, we do accept, and that is recycled as well. So really, those type of materials, we want to continue to encourage residents to continue that recycling within the recycling stream. As you can imagine, if you have a 38% increase in your volume, what we are wanting, we want to see a way that we can keep up with that volume increase. Obviously, it started peaking in March, but believe it or not, this month, our recycling volumes were the highest all year. I say this month, September was the highest volumes all year. So as we went into March, April, May, we thought maybe some of the volumes would level off and get back to a more normalized state as we went into the summer. That did not happen. And if anything, particularly with more people working from home, some of that volume has shifted from being in offices to being at their home carts. So that's really what's attributed to a lot of that volume increase. And honestly, we don't see that changing. So we want to make adjustments. Currently, with the volume that we've seen, we are sending in extra support, quite frankly, from other areas to help with some of the recycling particularly. And we envision that the ideal situation would be at some point in the near future to have a reroute of the recycling and to take recycling as it is now, every other week collection for the entire city, to divide that collection with half the city one week, half the city the other week. And what that will allow us, it will give us capacity to be able to pull in a little bit additional resources to do that. So that's something that we're looking at doing. We could label it patriotically as a red week and a blue week. You know, we can make it whatever two colors you want to choose, but that's least important to us, being able to handle the volumes and to maintain service. We're looking at this as a service improvement opportunity because we really, right now, are piecemealing, trying to keep over that volume. And to do something like what we're suggesting with the reroute would enable us to do that. Yes, ma'am?
Just follow-up to that. So versus red, blue versus A, B, okay?
Yeah, exactly.
When are you thinking to do that?
Really, that would be up to what the city wants to do. So it really would depend upon what you feel would be the best situation. It's been suggested that maybe we look at the first of the year. That would allow some time to, one, notify the residents. We have proposed that we would send postcards to those that would be in that loop. We'd also tag carts and let the residents know. So we would want to make sure we have a lot of communication. Even though their service levels would remain the same, that one week of switching, half the city would probably have recycling service two weeks in a row to kind of level set that service.
Two follow-ups?
Yes, ma'am.
So fiscally, is there a fiscal note to that for us?
At this time, there's not a fiscal note to that.
Number one. Number two, are you seeing this spike rate increase anywhere else? Or in other towns and cities?
Yes, this actually, the recycling increase here has actually exceeded some other municipalities. And I think that's, you know, kind of to speak to some of the exciting things going on within Albemarle, to be frank with you. Y'all really have had a nice revitalization, at least from my observation, be it, you know, meek and mild, but truthfully, there seems to be a resurgence and some excitement here in the city. And I think as people are seeing some of the things going on here, Pfeiffer obviously opening, there's a lot of positives. And so I think that's also playing into some of the recycling increases. You may have some students here, and of course, we know that they grew up with recycling. You know, I did, but my children did. So they totally buy into what's the right thing, how can I give back? And honestly, through this pandemic, like I mentioned, there's a need for recycled materials. So if we can continue good recycling habits, recycling right, that's something that we want to see.
Thank you, Mayor. So just to clarify, I think when we've met, obviously, staff has met with Waste Management to talk about this, to ask some questions, try to vet this issue. We understand completely what's going on and what they're trying to accomplish. And as Marilyn said, once it's in place, there's no difference. It's just the staggering to start the first cycle. So we were, we've been targeting about mid-January because that accomplishes a couple of things. One, it gets us past the holidays, which is also a very heavy time while we're doing this to improve service and deal with the increased volumes. You know, there could be some challenges during that first week and during that transition. And so the holidays may not be the best time to do that. Number two, mid-January also gives us time to make sure that lots of the Waste Management to publicize, the city will also publicize. And we want to give it every chance for success, to be implemented properly and to be able to get the word out about what's going on. So that January, mid-January timeframe gets us past the holidays, past that peak point, that annual peak point that we see on recycling and also gives us the opportunity to get it done correctly.
Yeah, because we do. We definitely agree. And, you know, we obviously care very much about the City of Albemarle and the residents within the city. And we want to make sure that they know what's getting ready to happen. So we've given them ample notice, communicated correctly and appropriately.
Yes, sir. Do you take any metals?
We don't take what I would say would be industrial-type metals, so copper and things like that, but the metal at your vegetable containers, those type of things we take. Metals that are of an industrial nature actually have to be separated out, and they can't process through a regular, what we call single-string MRR because of the equipment. It would actually tie within the teeth of that equipment. So they have to be processed separately.
I was very surprised at talking with the owner of Charlotte and all of their raw materials consist of recycled metals. And they collect it all over the eastern part of the United States and bring it in by railroad. And everything they use is recycled.
You would be surprised, in fact, the material recycling facility where the City of Albemarle materials go, all those materials are repurposed, so to speak, within the state of North Carolina. So we don't ship them anywhere abroad. It stays, the material stays. And so, for instance, that detergent tied or gain or whatever you use at home, that material's made into probably another one of those containers. Whereas you might see cardboard, and cardboard might turn into other materials, that PPE and so forth, and plastics, obviously, into some PPE materials. You see the number one and the number twos on the plastic bottles. Well, the number ones, a lot of those are made into carpets and carpet pads and some clothing. You also might see there's a company in North Carolina that actually does the logo for Nike, and that thread is made from the materials from that PET. The number two is still very strong. There's a company that actually uses that for making or remaking milk jugs and so forth. So numbers one and numbers two on the plastics are usually, can be repurposed pretty quickly. Number five has some repurposing. I think of those as your multi-use dairy products. So your cottage cheese holders, your sour cream holders, that comes from number five. Threes, fours, six, sevens have minimal reuse value. Though they do have it, it just takes a lot. But one, twos, and fives really have. You probably will see it back into something else before the end of the year, whatever's collected today. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Mr. Robinson, thank you first and foremost for being here. Someone mentioned me last week, and I don't have it in front of me, but somewhere on social media, there were some residents that were kind of confused about where the recycling from the City of Albemarle goes. So while this meeting is being recorded and then, of course, we're on social media, can you give us a detailed explanation of where the recycled goods go from the City of Albemarle?
Absolutely. And in fact, the state knows as we report, you know, what different places that we collect materials for. We collect the materials within the City of Albemarle. We take it to a bay that's been dedicated for recycling, our East Spencer Transfer. And then we have trailers that we take up to our Winston-Salem Material Recycling Facility. And that is a single-string facility. So there, all the materials are processed, which, you know, some communities don't accept glass, but our facility there does. We actually have that go ultimately to Strategic Materials, which is in Wilson, which is a glass manufacturer, or glass recycler to be a manufacturer. So it all ends up, goes to East Spencer Transfer in a bay where the materials are loaded onto a trailer, and then it's taken to the Winston-Salem area.
Perfect, thank you. Also, aside from that, I just want to share with you that, you know, I've been observing the council since 2014, and I don't think I've ever, I don't think we've ever had a relationship with Waste Management to the level of attendance and professionalism that you exhibit. You know, anytime I reach out to you, it's, I mean, doesn't matter if it's on a Sunday, I'll do that, but if it's an emergency, anytime I've reached out to you, you are extremely professional and extremely quick. You leave it often many times to talk with the resident yourself. And that speaks volumes. And so I definitely, I can't speak for anybody else up here, but I tell you, I really do appreciate everything that you do helps out.
When I say it's a pleasure, it is a pleasure.
Thank you.
I love speaking with the residents when those opportunities exist. I hate that, you know, right now, we can't go and speak with the school age and kind of do some demonstrations and so forth. But we look at it, Waste Management, and I can speak for myself, looks as the City of Albemarle. We look at ourselves as an extension of what we can provide to the residents. And so we passionately care.
You've been a colleague that has been having a seat with your boss.
I have a wonderful boss who's actually familiar with Albemarle for a long time. He lives in the North Carolina area as well. But truly, you know, it's our drivers, to be honest with you. We have a long-term driver staffing. And we also, thankful, have not had any COVID cases. We've remained healthy. Safety is our first and foremost priority above everything that we do, and that will continue, I can tell you that.
Correct, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We just mentioned, we constantly, the two things that I guess we hear the most are loose pickup, in other words, the two-hand truck, the rubbish truck you run around, and limbs. What are we doing to try to address some of those issues? Because it seems like, it seems like they don't get it every week, but they'll get it the next week.
Are you talking about the bulk pickup? Or are you talking about what's in the cart?
But bulk and limbs.
Okay, so the leaf and limbs, we actually have what's called a, we call it a...
A claw truck.
I don't know if that's what, a claw truck, yeah. And that actually picks up the limbs and leaves, or the limbs. So as those trucks go through, if it's down, like sometimes if it's down the ditch, honestly, they may not have seen it. As far as the bulk, we have them go through the city. And in fact, our bulk increased 13% so far year-to-date, which one would expect. You know, you would expect it probably has with more people home. So the bulk collection is a separate truck. It's used on what we call a rear loader, so that's a whole separate. So we actually have in the City of Albemarle, if it's recycling week, we actually have four trucks, more than four, but four types of trucks that are running through the city. And our rear loader picks up the bulk. Our boom truck picks up the leaves. And then we, of course, have to separate that with trash and the recycling.
Is there something you could do to help us with that? That's what we get criticized the most for. Especially on social media.
Absolutely. Well, and of course, more people are home, so they're in front of their computers more. We understand that. As far as the bulk, a lot of times, what we see is if people can't fit it in their carts, then go on and bag it and then put it next to the car or somewhat so that it could be right there so we can see it at the curb. If they don't bag it, then if we load it into the truck, particularly if it's lightweight, it will start flying out. So we will absolutely address that, and I'll mention your comment to our team. And we actually appreciate those comments, you know. So it's nice to hear the good, but to be honest with you, because we care, and I'm not just, that's not words, we do, then we appreciate those comments as well.
Further comments, Council?
I do, I just, I can't tell you, it seems like yesterday, Marilyn, it's probably three months ago. Just an example to my fellow council members. I sent her a text about trash on the road that had been, no joke, it was going everywhere as they were going up the road. And it was almost like the man, just as soon as I hit send with the picture, the trash truck came right back down, and he got out and he cleaned it up. So I sent her another picture, and I went out and told him. I said, "Listen, I like catching people doing things good and extraordinary." I said, "I just sent this to Marilyn, both of these."
So... If it finds out, in particular if he's going up and down, you know, they'll go down one side, has the side loader, and then they'll go down the other. If he doesn't see it, and really, sometimes it's recycling because you think about the lightweight plastic bottles and things like that that we want loose, sometimes it might be recycling. He may not see it going, but when he comes back, if he sees it, then he's supposed to get that.
But he did it.
The latest thing in trash pickup, which my wife and I do, you know, regularly, are these masks.
Oh, yeah.
That goes in the trash. That goes in the trash, not the recycling container.
No, no, I'm talking about on the side of the road.
Oh, yes. Okay, yes.
People are chugging those things out the window.
I know.
Large helpers.
I've heard you mention that, though. Because that goes in the trash when you discard your mask.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate it.
Thanks, ma'am. Number nine, introduction Carmen Rangel, the RA Marketing Association.
If I could say a few words before Carmen comes forward, or as she's coming forward. You know, we've talked about before that we've not really had the ability to really market ourselves as we'd like. We know there's a lot of good things going on in the city, but, you know, we could probably do better and have more opportunity to promote ourselves, our brand, our activities, what's going on, than what we have the ability to do right now. So like many things, this is a skill. It takes a specific skill set to do it properly. So towards that end, we've developed a custom scope of work with Carmen and her company, you already marketing. So Carmen is local, has a background in this work, and has her own company, you are marketing. And as we kick off this effort, just wanted to ask Carmen to come forward, introduce herself to the mayor and city council, and just say a few words about her services and company.
Absolutely. Well, first and foremost, thank you guys, this opportunity. It has been an absolute blessing for me since June, which is whenever our business was kicked off. Some of you have known me from a previous entity in which I worked and did a lot of marketing there, was actually marketing director. Like I said, I've made a lot of connections here in Albemarle and with a lot of people here, relationships that I've carried over into this business as far as membership. And the way my business works, it is a membership base. We help businesses gain visibility, educate and inform the public. And on social media, it's a major platform. And we just hope that they're grateful in any need that they may have. We try to make it personal to each business, because one business may need something a little different than the other as far as promotions go. We have quite a few followers on social media, as far as Facebook, Instagram, and things like that. Those are some of the things that we plan to implement and help encourage and create content for here as well. So like I said, this is, we are, since June, we have 35 current members, nine of which are in the Albemarle city limits, including the city of Albemarle and Albemarle Parks and Research Department. We've worked closely with Lisa Kaiser, creating Instagram content, anything and everything she needed as far as programs that are going out. We have an email newsletter that goes out, as well as a website. And then also anything she shares on social media, we're picking up and we're sharing on our platform as well. There are a lot of things in the work, obviously, in the works, we have a lot of strategic planning to do. Our plan to get to know a lot of the department heads and work just specifically with each department head to see what need that they have currently for what needs to be promoted and that sort of thing, so.
So as Carmen has mentioned, she has the membership-based business. But in our conversations with her, we've developed a bit of a customized bit of service, because the city doesn't need necessarily the promotion in the same way that, say, private business might. But we have a lot of information that we need to make public, utilize different avenues to make that happen, and also be more proactive in communicating some of the positive things that are happening, some of the upcoming events and activities. So it's a little bit different, I think, than maybe some of our other clients. But again, it serves, it, we feel like, you know, Carmen and you are marketing, have that ability to really meet our needs and help us get into an area that we've been lacking. And so this will give us something of a more consistent, regular, and proactive basis that we've not had in the past.
Council, any questions? Carmen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Number 10, update on strategic planning and priority setting process community survey.
Sure. Before, we should have Geraldine Gardner on the phone. Before I turn it over to Geraldine, just want to say a few words. We, as everyone knows, we've utilized Carolina Regional Council. If you don't recognize that name, it is what Central Indiana Councils of Government has been rebranded as. So we use them last year for our planning and priority-setting sessions to make improvements to our processes and to be more deliberate and intentional about what we're doing and setting long-term priorities. One of the feedback items we received out of last year's activities was that we need to get more community input. We need to reach citizens. We need to ask them what they have in mind for the city, what their vision of the city is. So we're utilizing, again, this year as we go through our processes, I just about said cog, but Central Indiana Regional Council's facilitation services once again. And one of the things we're also working with them on is a community survey, because we would like public input regarding the future of the city. So while we're still developing some of the details about exactly when and what that'll look like, we do know that in an effort to reach as many people as possible, we want to, first of all, communicate with the public about what's going on, but also do a combination of mailing and electronic options for participating in the survey. Because if we're going to get a clear picture of what the public would like for us to do for the future of the city and the things they're interested in, we have to have a good cross-section of the public's, of the public and make sure we hit a good variety of citizenry to get their input. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Geraldine Gardner with, the executive director with Central Indiana Regional Council for her comments. Geraldine?
Thank you, Michael. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, wonderful. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm delighted to be with you all by phone this evening, and thank you for a few moments on your agenda to share some information about the work that we've been doing to prepare for this upcoming strategic planning and budgeting session. So as Michael mentioned, we are pleased to be able to work with you again this year. We felt that our process last year really helped to make some improvements to the way that you all have been working on developing your budget and setting strategic priorities for the city. And it's truly a collaboration between Michael and his leadership and vision for the process, working alongside Nikki as well as the rest of the leadership team. So after a brief hiatus over the spring and summer, we were happy to get back connected with them and work with them to really flesh out a vision for how we can continue to build on last year's process. So we have developed a schedule. I know all of you have those dates for the different council work sessions in November and February already on your calendars. But I've been invited tonight by Michael just to share a few comments related to the community survey. And I want to commend the council, as well as the administration, to really have the foresight that you did last year to recognize as we were going through the process that there was an opportunity to get the community engaged and to have more perspective and more voice into the process. And by community, I mean intentionally, there's the residents of the city of Albemarle, our business owners, employees, students, you know, the people who are coming to the city, that are living here, that are working here, and are contributing to the sense of place and the economy that you're trying to create in your city. And so what we have proposed to the administration is to develop a community survey. This is a tool that you use very often in planning processes to take the pulse of different stakeholders on a constrained set of issues. We have to be judicious in this type of time commitment. We're asking for people to participate in the survey. We want to be strategic with the topics that we're asking. And the results of this survey will really be used to directly inform the development of your upcoming fiscal year budget, including getting feedback on the current strategic priorities that you all adopted last year. It will also help the administration to understand some opportunities for long-range planning, potential capital needs, as well as public services. And from the work that was just forecasted by the previous presenter, we also feel it's an excellent opportunity to potentially get some feedback from the public on marketing and the public image of the city, which is something that also came up during last year's project. And so the purpose of the community survey is, it's really another evolution of the process improvements that you all are making, to make sure that you're, how you're spending the money, your money aligns with the needs of the citizenry and of your community, and making sure that the survey results help to inform not only current decision-making, but future decision-making as you embark on different processes. So with that, I just want to talk a little bit about the design process and our partner in the survey. But let me just pause there and see if there are any questions about sort of the why, the why of the survey, why are we doing this?
Council, any questions?
None at this point.
Continue on, Geraldine.
Okay, sounds good. It's hard when you're on the phone, can't read the room, so just want to make sure I'm not going too fast. So we are going to be partnering with a survey firm. The name of the company is Qualtrics, Q-U-A-L-T-R-I-C-S. It's a nationally recognized survey company. We have partnered with them on previous community survey projects across the region. And we like using them because they are experts in survey design, and they can help us translate questions that we'd like to ask into questions that are properly worded, that are not leading questions, or run the risk of having any question bias. So they are really those experts that can help us and you create, take the vision of what you want to accomplish and write the right questions for that. They also have a very large toolkit of ways to disseminate the survey, including things like, one community that we worked with had concerns that people who didn't live in the community would take the survey and influence the outcome. So Qualtrics is able to take your address file and develop QR codes specific to each address, so that a postcard can be mailed to that address with a customized access code for the survey. And that really ensures, in this particular community's case, it helps ensure that people who are property owners or living in the community, or business owners in the community who are really the ones taking the survey. So that's just one example. Of course, we will look at the accessibility of the survey, both paper-based, online, and come up with an outreach strategy to promote the survey and make sure people have ample opportunity to complete it. In terms of the questions themselves, we have talked initially about a timeline and a process with Michael. We want to engage the city administration's leadership team and a smaller subset of volunteers that would work with Centralina to help provide some initial goals for the survey questions and specific topics. We will then review them. We will work with Qualtrics to design some initial survey questions, take that drop back to the broader leadership team, as well as the council, for your input and feedback, and then work to finalize the survey before it's released to the public. So based on the process and how we'd like to use the information, we're hoping to do the survey during the month of November, maybe even a little bit into December, so that we have time to synthesize the results and to bring that back to both the city administration and the council in January and February in line with your process. So that's the rough timeline, and I'm happy to answer any questions or take any suggestions that you all may have about the question design process itself or the implementation of the survey.
Ms. Hough?
Geraldine, it's Martha Sue. Hello there.
Hello.
Guess I'll be with you next week. Three follow-ups. What other governments in Centralina have we, or have you all used this with? This particular-
Yes.
Yeah. What other governments?
Most recently, last, let's see, most recently, it was the town of Marvin in Union County. That was the last survey that we did, and I believe that was almost two years ago at this point. Before that, we did a community survey in Belmont in Gaston County. And prior to that, prior to my time, so I'd have to get back to you.
That's fine. It's given me, so it's been two years since you've done it, since we've done it, actually, right?
Correct.
Okay. Follow-up to that-
For our community survey, there's been sort of other survey work that we do as part of our other projects, of course, but in terms of a specific community survey, most like in this case, it would be Marvin.
Okay. The two follow-ups to that, just for information, and then for, not necessarily suggestions, but, and I'm looking back now at our assistant city manager, we did a survey, some sort of a survey last fall, I guess it was, when we were trying to determine special events wanted. Will you make sure that that gets part of the development of this survey? Because we did it the hard way, I think, about going one-on-one to people. I can't remember, was there one online, too?
We promoted it online. We had it on our website, Facebook, and then we did it at the special event.
Okay, that's right. That's what I thought. We did the promotion online, but we actually did the taking of the survey in person, and we did not have as much participation as I had hoped, so I'm glad they're doing this. So just, if you don't mind, I would love for that to be a part of this when it gets into special events, what people want, what people want to see going on in and around Albemarle. And the last, I guess, question I have, and I did not hear unless I was not paying attention, is the how. What vehicle are you going to use to get this survey out and done? Or is that-
Yes, absolutely. That's a great question. And later this week, we have an initial kickoff meeting with Qualtrics, where we'll hear more about the multitude of ways we can get the survey out. So I'll be reporting back to Michael and Nikki on the sort of opportunities. And we'll also have a conversation with the ways that city staff can support. So it will definitely be an online survey with a paper option, because we want to make sure we're accessible. But we will talk, be talking through with Qualtrics, you know, the specific logistics of that.
Thank you.
Great.
You're welcome.
I've been involved in strategic planning for over 40 years, and I've seen millions of flip charts filled up with brilliant ideas and torn off and nailed to walls, and out of that, we come out with this cataloging of things that the citizens would like and dream and that sort of thing. But you know, we're missing one element there that I would like to see introduced, start being introduced in strategic planning. By doing it the way I just described, you're expecting the people of a community to have enough knowledge of things that they can come up with all of these interesting things that a community ought to do. But what I would like to see are some options presented for people to have that other communities have done, and perhaps done successfully, that might spark an interest in our community. So I don't know if that's feasible with what you're planning with this survey, but as we move forward in strategic planning in the city of Albemarle, I'd like to see as one part of the process, the protocol that we would follow in developing a strategic plan, I'd like to see presented to our folks a whole list of wonderful ideas and projects. And let us start with that and blend that in with our own idea of what our community ought to do. And that way, I think we can get the best of both worlds there. Let's use some, or at least let's consider some wonderful ideas that other people have thought of. We don't have to invent the wheel every time.
Thank you.
Council member, that is an excellent point. And as I hear you talk, what comes to mind from my point of view is prioritization. And so that, that's what I took away from your comments, that getting initial ideas to the community and have them weigh in on the investments or the priorities that speak to them and their needs. And that certainly can be part of a robust strategic planning process. I think what we're trying to do with this survey is really take the first step, and from my conversation was- from my conversation with Michael, that there hasn't been this type of community engagement via a survey in quite some years. So I think we can get to the point where we're talking about once we have these initial perspectives from the community captured in this survey.
Yeah, I did not mean in lieu of the brainstorming.
Understood.
But as a trigger or an enhancement to that, because you still need to let our own people dream and brainstorm.
Yeah.
Do both, do both. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Ferris, you want to wrap up?
No, I think that summarizes it. We, as Geraldine said, it's something we have not done to this degree, to this scope before, where we're going to do our best through different means of communication and options for reporting, because we do want to get as many people involved as possible. As a community, there's certainly different interests and elements and groups within the community, and we want to reach as many people as we can, because everyone's got a different idea and different needs and different, based on their situation. And so we're going to do our best to disseminate it equitably and across the community the best we can. And just wanted to share this with council, because it is something that's an output of the last year's priority planning session.
Thank you. Thank you, Geraldine Wiggles.
Thank you all, have a great evening.
Thank you, you too, Geraldine.
Number 11, Joy Oliver, Main Street Mayor, to provide a full view of the North Carolina Main Street program annual reports.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Mr. Ferris, thank you all for taking the time to let me come and speak for you this evening. I will be sharing data that we submit each year to the North Carolina Main Street Program that is required for us to keep our accreditation for our annual reports. In addition to that, while those numbers are important, I don't feel that it quite tells the whole story about the activities that go on within the Main Street office from year to year, so if you will indulge me, I will share a few extra tidbits for you this evening. So I'll get started with this. Okay, someone can walk me through the slideshow, how does that work? Having slideshow presentation.
Oh, and can you help round?
It is also in the packet.
Joy, do you have control of the mouse or is that something?
Yes.
Okay, so if you go down as an attachment, right there, that should open up.
There it is, thank you.
And then down the bottom left.
All right, I'm going to step in this little PDF and we're good to go. Awesome, thank you. So we can start with the information on buildings and property. Overall, we look at all the buildings that are located within the municipal service district when we come up with these numbers. And this is information that we gather through GIS records, it is information that we gather from property owners and from just in general observation of downtown throughout fiscal year. So having said that, we reported eight facade improvements, two building rehabilitations completed, five public improvement projects completed or were in progress. Downtown investment, you'll see, of course, there's a property, a majority of the property investment, which total combined was over $14 million, $14,887,728. Again, the majority of that was the fiber campus, they invested over $11 million into the downtown campus. Public investment, $3,762, or $762,806, excuse me. A good portion of that was for the new Alamo Police Department headquarters. Also, there was some restriking of parking at Third and North Streets. Also, the county invested money to make parking repairs at the Stanley County Courthouse. Downtown jobs. We had 16 new full-time jobs created, 14 full-time jobs lost, with a net of two full-time jobs gained. The part-time jobs, there were no net part-time gain, there were four gained and four lost, so that was a wash. A lot of the job gains were from land serging and cooling, they moved into the former Main Street pool supply building, they added eight new full-time and two part-time jobs to our downtown workforce.
Joy, can you hear the interview started?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, it's July 1st of 2019 through June 30th of 2020. Downtown businesses, we have five new businesses opened downtown the last fiscal year, two businesses reported close. Then we have three businesses expand in our downtown. If you'll look, photo on the very right-hand side, that is a boutique called Food and Table, they recently were our ADDC Design Committee's appearance award recently for the third quarter. They actually expanded, they outgrew an incubator space they occupied in a small space next to Blue Sand Realty, and expanded across the street and are doing very well. Volunteer hours, we can't do what we do without the work of our volunteers. They are absolutely essential to the downtown revitalization work that we do. We clocked in 439 volunteer hours. That has contributed to folks who attend our downtown committee meetings, that assist with our events, and also work with us on our beautification projects. You'll see Peter Shudo was our North Carolina Main Street Champion of 2019, he's done a lot of volunteer work. Richard Joyce Lambert over right here, they've done a lot of work with our downtown plantings also, they volunteer a lot of time with the Stork Society to announce they are our 2020 North Carolina Main Street Champions, and so they'll be honored at the state conference for Main Street this spring. Our volunteers pulled together to do the library sculpture repainting project that we were really tickled to be able to get off the ground this, at the end of this past fiscal year. So the Main Street Program values volunteer hours of 24,19 per hour, you look at the $9,425 value of those volunteer hours from 2019 to 2020 fiscal year. All right, another thing that the Alamo Downtown Development Committees do is award matching grants. That's assistance that we provide to businesses for different improvements that they make, from facade improvements, landscape improvements, new signage, landscape improvements, architectural grants, collectively, with the list of businesses that we have here, between June, excuse me, July 1st of 2019 through the end of June 2020, we awarded $13,150.18 total in ADDC nonprofit funds to help these downtown businesses make facade, signage, and landscape improvements. And that's different recipients of those grant awards. And something that I think we have really worked hard to do in our office is to really work with, to create economic development in our downtown and really get new businesses into these buildings. And some of the ways that we've done that, especially this past fiscal year, we have really worked to connect prospective business owners to our downtown property owners and realtors, and following up once we get a connection and they work out to find some property to lease and get moved in. We provide the matching grants that I just talked about earlier. We maintain an available property listing on the ADDC website. We provide signage to property owners to advertise vacant properties, you'll see in the picture there, the sign in the window, that gets people calling our office to start a conversation about the assistance that we offer if they are able to lease those spaces. We also work in partnership with City of Alamo Planning and Development. I think we have really worked hard collectively to create a very good working relationship. Just in this past month, we have had three different meetings with, between various property owners and prospective property owners. We had someone interested in opening a business, someone to know what was available and how to get started, and so we have really, really worked hard together. I think Kevin and the staff there have been phenomenal to work with, to really, really work to create a business-friendly climate in our downtown. Also, we have, I think we have a great working relationship with Stanley County EDC, I make sure, give a monthly report to them every month so that they know what's going on in economic development in our downtown. Stanley County Chamber of Commerce, we stay in communication as well on potential projects. Also, stay in communication with building owners to make sure that I'm keeping in communication and do my part to encourage them to continue improvements on our downtown properties to make them more attractive to our prospective business owners. Next page, this is just a run-through of our downtown events that we've worked with in 2020, and we have had to do some things differently because of COVID. We had a great after-hours mixer back in February at Four Rivers Consignment, where we did a presentation about leveraging local, about how businesses take the resources that we have here and incorporate them into products and services, was well received. Stanley County Quarter Light Festival, we had attendance of 1,000. Came across the numbers for 2015 that had around 500, so that attendance has doubled in the last five years, which I think says a lot for that event. At Boozin's Bonanza, that happened right after COVID, yeah, we had to flip the switch and go virtual very quickly, and we had over 800 viewers on our live Facebook feed, and all things considering, I think it went really well. Sounds of the Square Music Series, we kept having to put off and put off. We finally did one last Friday, everyone was spaced out and socially distanced, and it was, I think it was a nice touch to downtown, live music, it slowed the traffic down, they saw that we had activity downtown, which was the point we were trying to make. Torrey Elvis, we work with Alamo Parks and Rec to put on this great event each year. The Food Truck Friday that had been at City Lake Park moved to Market Station to support the event, and it had a good turnout, Parks and Rec reported a number to be at 300 people that attended that. Autobus extravaganza, I know we've had discussion on how we have had to get creative and work through the COVID restrictions to still find some fun and creative ways to make sure that our community enjoys a safe and fun Halloween season. And so the other tentative dates, Christmas Parade, Open House, we've had discussion about that, Saturday, November 28th, which is also Small Business Saturday, which being downtown, will come up with some extra incentives for people to come and shop at our downtown small businesses. Holiday Tour of Homes, we have set for Sunday, December 13th, 2020, eight tour sites confirmed with COVID restrictions in place, with masks, hand sanitizer, limited people in each site at each time. So that is what we have for this year. Speaking of COVID, we have spent time helping downtown businesses survive COVID and really trying to be a resource for these businesses with whatever needs they may have. When it first started and businesses were not sure what they could do inside their stores, and they had the limited capacity, especially the smaller ones, we created curbside pickup signs and provided those for businesses to set out the sidewalk. We created a downtown restaurant takeout guide, we created a large shopping guide, worked with businesses individually, such as Tippings at the Bordering. The Ritz and Stanchions actually belong to the ADDC, they're market stations, we approved those so that she was able to broach some dining outside and still be able to operate her restaurant under the capacity. We've had others get creative, you'll look, Jasmine from, you aren't hearing, Dr., she's showing off her mask with the clear view, so for those who are hearing impaired and still relive this. And I think too, we manage our own three different community spaces. We have Market Station, we have Liberty Gardens, we've got Courthouse Square Park. And it made me feel really good that people were comfortable calling our office and coming to us and, you know, with offering to start these important conversations about cultivating unity and ways for our downtown and our city to make sure that we are doing our part to be as inclusive and as loving and as open as possible. And I was, I was very, very pleased that people were comfortable coming to us to start those conversations. And that is all I have.
Questions, Council? Thank you, Joy. Number 12, update on reimbursements for damage incurred from Hurricane Florence.
Evening.
Okay, so high level here, real fast, and then we can get into any detailed questions that you may have. Of a total documented cost of about $592,000, we have received or are in the process of receiving $429,000, which is 72% of the total project. Of the 429, that's four projects that are complete, which are your A, the B, and the two Fs, utilities. The project that is remaining is Category G for the Parks and Recreation Department, and that is $159,000, which we are currently in the process of receiving funds for. So over the past year, we have finally crossed that threshold to being obligated with the state, which means that at this point, we can request funds as we use them. So the remaining amount of the $592,000 is the $162,000 that is in the budget amendment portion of that. And that can be, as we use it, that can be a request. So if we spend $10,000, we can turn that right around next week and send the reimbursement request to the state.
This may not be a fair question to you, and Lisa's not here, I don't get, what are we, do we have any plans for what would happen with the last flooding to our fences?
Lisa should be on the phone. Lisa, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Did you hear the question?
Uh, no, please repeat.
The question was, the question was regarding flooding and damage to the fencing at, I guess, the ball fields on Highway 52. Anything being done differently to, was that the question, Mary, anything being done differently to maybe keep this from happening again, if there's anything possible?
And what are we, what are we doing to repair them?
I think that was your question, that was your question.
It has been repaired. And there's really, because it is a ball field and that's the type of fencing that they use, and it isn't a flood, floodway, flood zone, whatever, there's really nothing that we can do.
You answered my question, it's been repaired. That's what I was about to, it had not been repaired. So you, it has been repaired, then that was my major question. You've been repairing the, the big field and the little league field?
Both fields have been repaired, and Albemarle Youth League is using Optimus for their fall baseball rights currently.
Did we get any assistance with this repair?
With the main, from the main flooding?
From the insurance or anything?
No, it's not covered by insurance.
Council, have any questions?
So recap, we have, did you say 162, that's what, 162 is what we've got?
Yes, ma'am.
And you said Parks G. Explain, explain to me what that entails.
So with FEMA, they break out damages into damage types.
Right.
And that's how you do the project. So G is for anything Parks and Recreation related. And like Category F is utility, so it could be electric utility repair or repairs to the water treatment plant, those might be two different projects, but they're under the category F.
So as we, may I follow up? As we spend this $162, we can draw it down, is that what I've heard?
Standing is from discussion with David Vaughn at the state, that since we crossed the threshold, essentially FEMA has passed it to the state's hands, so now we can deal with the state to send in reimbursement requests. So we are in the process of putting together the first big one, which encompasses everything from Florence through June 2020, that's the $159,000, that's what I'm considering in process. And this 162 eight, they've said before, you can send a reimbursement request once a week, once a month. So just whenever you get the documentation together and you want to send them, it works.
So follow up, the work has been done. The work has been done, we just got to do the reimbursement part. Is that right? The fix has been made to the park caused by this, is that what I understood?
$159,000 for fixes have been made. The 162 eight, which is what's in the budget amendment request, that's to be completed. So that's going to cover some batting cages, backstop and netting, bleachers, the tennis court resurfacing at Rock Creek Park, some retainage wall repair at the Greenway, and a small item to repair the door, the press box at Optimus Park.
Council, further questions? So what was your last was about the retaining wall. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Number 13, an update on the Public Housing Assessment System Recovery Plan.
Mr. Mayor, I said, Council, good evening. Um, as you know, they'll look at agencies and authorities differently. They look at the size of the agencies, they also look at the programs that they offer. City of Alamo offers and administers two programs, Housing Choice of Outbound and Public Housing. The Public Housing Assessment System, or BOSS, is a system that HUD uses to score public housing and programs. They use a combination of information to produce this composite score. And this 100-point scoring system is based on four categories of indicators. You've got the fiscal, you have the financial, the management, and capital funds program. For fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019, Department of HUD had issued City of Alamo Public Housing Authority on the score of 67 and the designation of small PHAD regulation. Basically, what this meant is we missed the mark on two of the indicators, the fiscal and the management. What that also means is it's more work on the agency, meaning we have to do more reporting, which is required on a yearly basis, as opposed to you score higher, you're going to report every three years or every other years. So prior to getting that score, um, on March 27th, 2019, a recovery plan was submitted to HUD on behalf of the department to basically improve that score. And what that recovery plan included was four components. Completion of a new fiscal needs assessment, advancing immediate needs in the capital funds program five-year plan, adjusting the inspection process, and increasing resident education. So to comply with a submitted recovery plan, um, what I've done is, since I've been hired, is first of all, I've asked and I spec staff to follow and enforce our policy, which is very important. HUD doesn't allow changes in policies unless you kind of go through an established and due process. What I've done is I've reviewed our procedures and how we do things, and I've implemented ways to basically improve the processes. In addition, I'm scheduling a two-day off-site retreat with our staff so that we can review our current agency policies, which means our pet policy, our satellite policy, trash policy, trespass policy, all these policies, because they haven't been updated in many many years. Without a doubt, there's going to be some recommendations coming forward regarding some changes. But basically what I'm seeing and I'm looking at how we're doing things. And I'm asking questions of why are we still doing this way? The answer I get is we've always been this way without any rationale. Our own staff, we gathered information from starting architect, from contractors, and internally to create and update our fiscal needs assessment going back to 1993. So we look at all the money we spent on infrastructure, from roofs, from HVAC, and looking at what the life expectancy is, this is, so we can plan for it in the next 10, 15 years going forward. With adherence to the, um, capital funds program, as you know, we're in the middle of a major project, which is costing about 1.3 million dollars. We currently have 1.5 billion dollars in our capital funds program. So after this program is completed, it's going to be roughly about $300,000, where we're listening to staff and prioritizing, basically moving forward how to spend this money. Personally, I've been to about half the public housing units so far. And what I've done is I've scheduled our housing inspector, maintenance supervisor, and our housing assistance program specialist to really complete inspections on all the units by the end of this, end of this year, by December 31st, 2020. I attend all resident council meetings, law and chief due incomes right there. And at that point in time, we receive a lot of information about residents, but also it's an opportunity to tell residents about their expectations, opportunities, barriers, and boundaries that are already in place. We're utilizing a newsletter to get out information to the residents and also get feedback from the residents. And I believe what was submitted, in addition to some of the things I've added, basically addresses a lot of the components of what was submitted to HUD already. Let me end this update by basically saying I'm grateful for, you know, Mr. Ferris and Ms. Hardy for their optimistic and kind of affirmative leadership. I mean, they have really allowed me to come in and not change anything, but put processes in place that's going to make a difference. If you go about properties, you can already see a physical change, or you've spent a lot of money, care is at funds, the new fencing, tree work, some landscaping. So again, the residents have noticed, and I think that you will notice if you haven't come by there. Basically, my goal is to improve our scores and put this agency as one of the top rated agencies in the city, or in the state rather. So at this point in time, I'd be glad to answer any questions anybody might have.
Yes, an update on the door project.
Door project is probably about 30%. Um, I wouldn't say complete, they're moving along. One of the issues is some of the materials, specifically the exterior doors and some hallways, four of the doors have not come in due to COVID factors being closed. So right now, we've probably competed, completed probably about 50 of the units, the interior doors, which really no complaints from the staff, they look pretty good. Um, they're having to come back once that new material comes in, which is expected end of winter. That's the scheduled date, but they have to come back, backtrack, and finish all the doors. But staff are sending out a project manager every two weeks. We're expecting the units, um, the quality we're getting, and again, replacing all the doors, interior and exterior doors in all the units right now.
Council questions?
You have a, so update on the playground equipment?
So when I run, I found some playground equipment stored in the backyard building. Been back there for about three years. Um, I met with Lisa Kaiser of Parks and Recs, and what we've been doing is communicating to get her staff, really all of them, because I have three members staff. Um, they're putting together a playground, takes a lot of time. So what we're working together is using some of the Parks and Rec staff, and we've had several schedules, dates to get it done, but weather has come into play. Um, but we're still in the works. Hopefully, in the next couple of months, as it's cooling down, that new playground will be installed.
Yeah, follow up. So when I saw that Ms. Hughes had asked that this be on today's night's agenda, I went back to that score sheet, okay? And it's, correct me if I'm wrong, we started the talk in March of 19, and it was based on the score sheet from a, um, inspection in November of 18.
Visibly ending 2007, so we've got to report for end of the year 2018.
Right.
In 2013, you got to report in November 2018.
That's what I said, right. That, it was the, that, the inspection, I believe the inspection was done in November of 18. If I, I may be wrong, but I spoke with the guy in Greensboro. Okay. And shortly after we got in in March of 19, to say, so, give me, explain to me those four different categories of which we were, uh, substandard, and I think that's the word he used on some of them. Have all of those, I'd call them a tick mark sheet, okay? Have all of those stuff, substandard tick marks been fixed or in the process of being fixed? Many of them are in that door thing, but then there were some electrical outlets. I mean, there were a lot of things that should have, I mean, I can't believe we allowed people to live in that with stuff open, but have they been fixed?
Well, and that's what we're going to do on all the unit inspections. So I do have a copy of the inspection that was done right here.
Yeah.
Um, and really the doors were the number one thing that was identified, but it really wasn't the biggest number that deducted from the contract.
Right.
It was more landscaping, it was more vegetation.
Right.
It was stuff that, you know, if you think somebody's got a plank wrong on the fence, no big deal, but HUD doesn't consider that a major deduction. So pretty much, I've spent $32,000 repairing, replacing most of the fence on the property right now. So again, there's not going to be any kids on the fence. Soil erosion, trees, code not touching the building, staff has worked on downspouts, gutters. So again, we've created a schedule, and our next step is getting in the units. Of course, with turnaround, we can do something on the unit today and come back in three weeks and got holes in walls already. But what HUD does is those are going to be rollups, but they don't make them score as much. Smoke detectors, we don't get any people to talk of smoke detectors. That's a major violation. It's a health and safety issue, which never far us within 24 hours to run it. So again, to answer your question, yes, on all four of the indicators, our occupancy, we went from 94 to end of June of this year, we're at 98%. So again, we're moving toward increasing all the indicators.
And when, follow up, if I might, when is our next scheduled federal HUD come in investigate, do inspection?
They actually suspended all react inspections for this year unless you request them to come in.
Gotcha.
We did not request them to come in because we're still working on a lot of the interior and the, um, basically the fiscal part. I'm very confident the other three indicators, the fiscal part, without getting into each one of them and making additional pairs, and that's 40%, that's 40 points right there.
You're good. So follow up to that is, are they on a federal fiscal year or a July, June 30th?
It's, you tell them, every housing authority agency has different fiscal year.
Okay. On what HUD, when they look at us?
We're on June 30th.
Right, we're on June 30th.
That's what HUD looks at.
Okay, they look at that one. So they're not, they're not, um, making us follow their federal, since they're a federal.
No, each, like I said, each one, it's different for each agency now.
Okay, you're good.
Do we have a date that we had to have all this done by? I mean, I know with COVID, that's probably some of the, you know, but did they have, tell us, hey, you've got to have this all done by a certain day or?
From our conversation with HUD, based on our previous score, we probably would have already been inspected.
Okay.
And again, if I would have requested, they would have given us a 14-day notice and we had 14 days to handle it. But because they suspended it nationwide, basically you kept the same score, but it didn't hurt you.
Okay.
And they'll look at it and you get it as much.
Thank you, very much.
Further questions, Council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Your municipal calendar is in your agenda, anyone have any questions?
Only addition I have is, uh, RPO is tentatively scheduled the next month, November of 19. That'll probably be in those in the, what we've been doing, and we've been doing those in the morning, like 10 to 12. I didn't see it on there, but there'll be a time posted later in case anyone's interested.
Consider agenda, oh, there's five items going for 2026 to amend the fiscal year 2020 budget. Proposed PD Avenue street closure for trick or treating. Consider agreement with Stanley County Schools to provide a remote learning location. Consider agreement with Stanley County Schools and the City of Alamo for an after-schools program. And consider rescheduling the January 18 meeting to January 19 due to the conflict with Martin Luther King Hall.
Your Honor, I know how some council does not like to pull things off, but I would like to pull off the proposed closing of PD Avenue for trick or treating, just so that we are all on the same page about how this is moving forward.
I'll hand a motion for the other four. So, motion by Councilmember Hughes, second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Now, proposed PD Avenue street closure for trick or treating. Do you have comments?
I, I do have comments. And, um, I know that last meeting, we talked about, bless your heart, you and your sweet wife are going to go out and, Kevin, and take all these things to all these residents on PD Avenue. Um, at the last meeting in, um, in September, we did not have yet what North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services was recommending. Um, shortly after, and I don't like social media when it gets to criticizing folks, but there was a lot of discussion on social media, and I guess I can look at Carmen, because Carmen, you may have to help do this. Um, is Almar all supporting trick or treating, how they're supporting trick or treating and those kinds of things, okay? And I just think that we are going to set that example. I don't want to shut down Halloween, okay? We've had to almost shut it down with downtown with our event that's going on, but I just want us to make sure that we, if we approve it, that we know what we're approving and have read through that, so.
Well, to your point, I think that's something that we really need to look at because unfortunately, I think right now, rural Carolina is one of several states in our country that are seeing another uptick in this, uh, in this pandemic. So I don't want to, you know, I think that we need to look at the state guidelines and make sure they're conjunction with what, uh, what they're doing. I'm like Mayor Prokhorov Hall, I don't want to shut Halloween down for sure, but at the same time, I don't want, you know, somebody on state level to be discouraging folks from trick or treating, and here we got a street closed down to encourage it.
I am very appreciative of that second page, okay? Very, very appreciative. Whoever put this together, I don't know who did, but I'm very appreciative. I thought it might be you, thank you, Kevin. Um, where it talks about the state, what the state is recommending. And like I mentioned last month, we can't, we can't wait, or we couldn't wait till later this month to talk about it, because you got to give the residents and the children families, but the residents particularly, some kind of guideline. So I just, you know, throw it out there and.
We could approve it with the strong recommendation that they follow, uh, the state guidelines.
We didn't, we didn't, I was just giving them one, one side, first with the general rule of the state.
I tried to provide a disclaimer at the very beginning there too, this is, you're not endorsing it or anything like that, you do so at your own risk, honestly.
Nobody paragraph, yeah, thank you.
You know, whatever I want to do.
Council, what's your wishes?
I'll make that motion.
Make that.
Because I just made.
Make the statement for me again, Mr. Brandler.
Approve it with the, with the, uh, with, as a rider, that we recommend to the community that they follow the state guidelines or gathering and that sort of thing.
And, and the state, and the state guidelines being spelled out, I mean, they're spelled out right here, you know, in any kind of social media. Can, would you approve that?
Well, we don't want to, we don't want to get into closing churches and that sort of thing.
No, I'm talking about trick or treating, Nick Doors.
Your motion is to approve closing PD Avenue with those stipulations. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion.
And, and we, Kevin, you and your wife are taking it upon yourself, aren't you? As residents, excuse me?
And then we got some volunteers also.
Very good, very good.
All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Under unfinished business, consider permits to boards and commissions. Council, we led it last time that we were going to look and see if we had anybody for historic resources. Has anyone come up with anyone? I've not heard of anybody mentioning anything that would want somebody.
Have any additional, um, applications come in to anyone, Mr. Ferris?
Not to my knowledge.
We have, I think it's one that, um, we don't have an application on yet.
Okay, okay, because that's, you know, that's the way I'd love to make sure that we do this, is that they come in through applications.
And having that, we'll just move that on to the next meeting. Number 21, consider replacement Stanley County Convention and Visitor Bureau. Does anyone have anyone for that? Mr. Brandler said he would like to reach out to someone unless somebody has one tonight. Mr. Brandler, we want to take that person right about next meeting, we'll continue that to the next meeting. New business information policy proposals for local county municipalities are now being accepted. Uh, the biggest thing I know of, because they already have it on their agenda, is revenue, some way for us to be able to increase our revenue. And in particular, for infrastructure and roads, that would be, we would ask the league to pursue. If council is still in agreement, I think we should look for a local bill that the league will not be involved in, as for us to continue with a local bill like we did last year, ask the, Mr. Saker to put it in again, is it coming here for us to have a, of course, in sales tax for roads? Council, I'm in agreement with that.
Was that not official action?
I think we should.
He will not do it unless we have.
Yes, we should have voted. Is that a?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Mr. Ferris, while we're at this point, you want to mention how we'll deal. Mr. Ferris, while we're at this point, you want to mention Powellville, what's occurring with that, what has occurred over the last couple of years?
Sure, and let me back up even more, just try to explain what Powellville is. Powellville is the local municipal portion of the sale, gas sales tax that everyone pays when they fill up in North Carolina. A majority of that goes other places, but because municipalities in North Carolina have a municipal road set, uh, system, a small percentage of that is distributed to municipalities. And within that distribution, there is 75%, 25% split. If I'm recollecting correctly, 75% based on road miles, 25% based on population. So they put those two things together and come up with your local distribution. So as the mayor mentioned, there's critical needs for road funding in North Carolina. During the time, the council has aggressively been increasing the city's share toward our road system funding, which I believe is probably 115 to 120 miles of city maintained roads inside of Alamooral, which is a significant amount of roadways, and those roads are there for everybody across the state to use, people coming out from shop, and we're glad they do, but those roads, the difference between what we receive as state Powellville funding and what we put into it has to be made up exclusively by our own taxpayers, which is why additional funding is critical. So this year, just last week, I was informed that our Powellville funding is being reduced below what was anticipated. Going from memory, it's about $477,000 will be our Powellville allocation this current fiscal year, that's the current anticipated figure. When we budgeted, we were anticipating $505,000 in Powellville funding. So we will be coming back at the next meeting with a budget amendment to lower that figure downward. It's not necessary in terms of budgeting, but we want to do that to make, again, make a point and share with the public what is going on, because that reduction means less road maintenance or more local only money going to roads that are used by folks across the city, county, and state. For comparison purposes, probably in 2007, 2008 time period, City of Alamooral received over $630,000 in Powellville funding. So we're looking at 477 this year versus 13, 14 years ago, $638,000 in Powellville funding. So not only have we reason, when you factor in, obviously, that's a big reduction in actual dollars received, but you also factor in the price of goods and services, the materials needed to pay roads, that 630, even being stagnant, had remained that same amount that entire time, it wouldn't go as far as it did 13 years ago. So the issue really compounds itself and, which is why we want to bring back a budget amendment to reduce that budget downward at the next meeting. I think council's wise to reconfirm their request to Representative Sasser, potentially Representative Brewer, to introduce a local bill to assist cities. When we did that, I guess, last year or probably two years ago, it was, time kind of escapes me there, I actually had several municipalities, I say several, at least two or three across the state, other city managers called me and asked me about that process, and they got copies. And I think if you're watching our bill and that issue in general, there were several other municipalities that also got their local representative to tack their municipality on, because this is such a critical issue. The more money we spend on roads, the less money we get from the state, the more money we spend ourselves, and we got to remember that the roads are supported locally by the general fund. Well, that's also the pot of money that supports police, fire, planning, you know, portion of finance, HR, IT, other things, park, all the parks and rec, so, and other public works operations. So when that money is stagnant or is actually reduced, we have to make up the difference, and that affects other critical services. So in general, that just puts more and more reliance on the property tax revenue that we receive. That's why different sources of revenue, different manners, more of a user fee, you know, people don't like paying taxes, I understand it, I pay them just like everybody else, but when they're all focused on property taxes, it puts a disproportionate responsibility on one area, when if it's spread out among many sources, people who actually use those services, like roads, and the mayor mentioned a 40 cent sales tax option as being a possibility for us, that also will then capture people, capture, that will also collect revenue from people who would, you know, fill up in Alamooral or like backup, pay sales taxes in Alamooral, but then, but may not live in the city, but they're coming in, using the roads and using other services within the city. So that's why diversity in your revenue stream is extremely critical.
Mr. Mayor, in that regard, we just, we just voted to, to ask the state to allow us to collect our tax money for roads. Looking down the road, let's make sure that that is in addition, that that money would be in addition to what we're, what we're already budgeting and what we might all normally add to the budget, because cities, counties, states, federal are notorious for voting in specific tax monies for one thing, and then cutting back the local appropriation for that and let it be taken up by that additional tax money. We should not do that. We should add, see that that money is added to what we are already spending on roads and what we would normally add in addition to that roads, whether that tax were there or not. I just think we need to be.
I agree totally, because that's one of the reasons I said before that we need to have a say in full roads.
Yeah.
That it can't be used for other things, say it's full roads. Come around the table, Mr. Ferris, you have anything?
Not that I can recall.
Mr. Hughes?
Um, can I have the chief up for this? I just got questions or concerns, I just want to ask him. With Pfeiffer now in, with students now downtown, and we've got Pfeiffer in progress, how can we communicate with those students? You know, I know some of them are going to be now, they're late at night, there's some that probably are not real familiar with our community streets. How can, how can we communicate to get, if they need a police officer to be escorted to their car? Have we reached out to them as a, as a base to share some information maybe with them? It just occurred to me, someone said they saw a student walking downtown the other night, it's kind of lame, I thought, I don't even know if they know how to contact, I mean, other than 911, but what are, what are your thoughts on?
I guess what we should do is reach out to Pfeiffer and just maybe make a flyer up that they can pass out to the students that will have a non-urgency number to call in case they needed an escort to a different business or.
Right.
Maybe to their residence or wherever they may be going.
Just, just have that friend come down.
May I make a suggestion there? Just have the chief have an appointment with Brenda Diaz and just tell her what Councilman Hughes did and just see if there's anything.
Absolutely.
We can do, I think that'd be the perfect way to deal with that.
See what she may have to offer back, maybe some of her concerns or maybe something that we can, I just want them to know, you know, safety and, and, I just want to be sure that they understand how to get ahold of somebody if they need to, and not to be concerned if they're, if they're apprehensive of walking to their car or whatever, to reach out and let y'all help them. So, do you know how to get ahold of?
I don't, but I'm sure I can help her.
Next, next one I have.
Put their, put their contacts, I'll shoot them.
Okay. And let us, if you would, next meeting, let us know kind of how that goes, and I know we're starting with a small group, but that group's going to grow, and I want them to, I want them to feel safe in our community, I don't have any concerns, but I just want them to be able to access y'all when they need you.
Sure, absolutely. One time, the chief of the building of my town had reached out to me to find out if Pfeiffer was going to hire off-duty at this campus. They have not yet, so, I think that's when I was looking over one.
Right.
Again, we can reach out to Diaz and.
Okay, I think that would be good, have a dialogue with her. You know, the group's small, it might be that, you know, you could even go in there one day and five minutes with them and just kind of introduce yourself and say, hey, here's, here's, here's who we are, here's some information.
Absolutely.
You know, just a face and a name.
We'll take care of that and get back to you.
Thank you very much.
Chief, early on, there was discussion about looking at putting whether emergency phone systems on the post like we have at the beauty college down there. We might want to talk about that too. What you were talking about in part-time, originally Pfeiffer's intent was not to add a part-time officer, and I don't know that that's going to change or not.
I think some miscommunications may have took place, if he was asking me, have they reached out to you, and I said no.
That was the original intent, but we did talk about adding the blue towel, what I'm talking about, that's what you got. Might be something we could do down there, that little road to car, give them access to something like that.
True.
Mr. Aldrich? Chief, changing gears a little bit, have we installed the exchange zone signs in front of the BPD, have we done that?
Ross and I were just talking the other day, and we, and I've got Owen, we've got the cameras set now, so we're, we're not going to have it in the front a bit of the police department now, we're going to have it behind it, where our cameras are stationed a little bit better. So we are in the process of moving that signage over and pushing that out to social media that our exchange zone have moved. Cameras are still on in the other place in case their exchange is made, but we will make that transition.
As you know, we had a situation at Walmart over the weekend or sometime in the last week, and going to make sure that, you know, for people that go on social media, Craigslist, or wherever it is, open that safe location, they can make that exchange.
Absolutely.
Mr. Hughes, did you have anything else?
No, no, thank you.
Mr. Aldrich, do you have anything else?
Yes, sir, I did want to bring up one thing to my fellow councilmembers. You know, we've had some discussion of, you know, during the, during some of the recent meetings about our normal meeting time, and, you know, I also want to be mindful of staff when we come to these city council meetings, sometimes they can get, they can go very long. And I don't want in any way, shape, or form cut short the residents on business that we need to handle, but I do think that, you know, I'll be glad to make the, I'll be glad to make the motion, I would like us to consider moving our regularly scheduled meetings from 7:00 PM on the first and the third Monday of every month to, and start at 6:30. I just want to get some feedback or optics, I'll put that in.
If the motion is in order, I'll certainly second it.
All right, let me first ask you this, is this a temporary to see how it works out, or is it permanent? Because there's two different reasons. If it's temporary, we can do it by, how we adjourn. If it's going to be permanent, we have to do it in an ordinance amendment.
I, I think it's, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, it's permanent, okay?
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge to change the meeting time to 6:30 PM, but that's it. Second by Councilmember Bramble, further discussion.
I would just, now, if we do this, I hope that, so that we not flip-flopping back and forth, in the summertime, whenever we get to talking of a normal 6 o'clock, we need to keep it at 6:30, we don't need to confuse the residents.
30 minutes, 9 hours. I've always, you know, thought that it's, the time of the meetings is up to y'all, the ones that are because of. You know, you're the ones that, y'all are going to get here, and since I'm a tower, I do it whatever y'all want. It's fine, it's fine.
We close at 3:00, please.
Your motion is to stem staff to bring us back in ordinance at our next meeting. Your motion is?
Yes, sir.
How about that, you're good with the second, I guess? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Mayor, if I could add, if council's intention is to start this at the next meeting, we'll just need to adjourn this meeting to 6:30, that the next meeting will have ordinance, and then there won't have to be any deliberate action beyond that, continue at 6:30. If not, we just start at 7:00 next time.
You think further, Mr. Aldrich?
Uh, yes, sir.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Williams?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Hall?
Back to the core municipal principles, I think we all probably got an email inviting anybody that wanted to take part in a, either a web-based one or in-person. Did I read that correct? Or did anybody?
There was some captured press.
Okay, so I have, I've signed up for one of the web-based ones, and so it'll just be interesting to see what other folks may be suggesting. Mr. Ferris, at some point, I'd like to see the scope of work and our, and the, whatever con, not necessarily the contract, but the scope of work and for what period of time we are entering into this relationship with Ms. Randall for scope, and if it's through this end of the fiscal year and those kinds of things. I'm tickled that we've got somebody that can help us with that, but I would like to see that and, and the fiscal note attached thereof. Charters of Freedom.
No, go ahead, I was hoping you would hit it.
Okay, well, I'll hit what I know about charters of freedom. I have had multiple calls with Jennifer McMillan, who is the Community Development Coordinator, multiple, and she and I, or she, we are having a conference call tomorrow, more, a Zoom call tomorrow at 11 with our local committee. She is going to tell the committee this, and I'm telling you all this, we were promised this big, the charters of freedom, and they are making it work, just like we were told they were going to do. They, I mean, what they said, whether, and I, I think I can quote her saying, if it costs a dollar or $100,000, they are bringing it to us, okay? Anything that we want to do, anything that we can do locally, will just be icing on the cake, and there'll be times and places in the charters of freedom where folks or organizations or businesses or individuals will be recognized for any donations that they make. So we have developed this local committee, and it's from, it's some arts folks, it's some education folks, it's folks from the Arts Council and some volunteers from the Arts Council, folks from the History Museum, but that is, we're meeting tomorrow to really talk about what the local committee is, needs to be doing, or to explain to these folks who are leaders in their respective disciplines, what, what this is all about. I don't know, and I'll look back to the mayor, today when I came by City Hall, I still cannot visualize as big as I think it's going to be in front of the Christmas tree. So I've really, you know, I know that they are, they, both with the, the construction part and with Jennifer and with their education component, it's three different avenues, and they're trying to come together, but I really still cannot visualize with that Christmas tree there, where it is. So do you have further information?
Well, their contractor came down here, he measured it out, it will go almost to the Christmas tree, you're correct, it'll go almost to it, but it will be basically the centerpiece behind the center section of the charge. Now, I wish I could tell you when we're going to start, unless we hear something tomorrow, I don't know the exact start date yet, because they ran into an issue with plans not having an engineer stamp, so they're having to get the plans updated with an engineer stamp before we can get the permit to pursue. Now, Michael and I are electrical superintendent, and I talked to the contractor about getting lighting in it, and he's told us what we need to do to do that. So we do plan to put lighting inside of it, the LED lights, it was not very expensive, I was actually pleased with that, and he's told us what to use and how to, how to go about it, but I can't tell you anymore right now about when, when it's going to start digging until we hear more.
Okay. Is there any place else we could put it?
Well, we looked and put it on this side, but it's not handicapped accessible.
And it's got to be.
Right, I understand that. Are those the only two options we have?
Well, we also live in the courthouse, but it's so big, it's going to wipe out the courthouse square park, it's going to wipe out so much in the courthouse square park because it's so big. I think our only option is that.
And the sad thing is, and, you know, it would be, do we move the Christmas tree? Okay, do we move the Christmas tree, move it back or move it some, I mean, I don't know, and I'm, I'm not saying that we need to do that, but the best part of having the charters of freedom right where they are on either side is because it's right across from the museum, and, and when they do.
Right.
When they take classes.
Okay, so with regards to the tree, do we not have a tree commission?
Yeah, if it has to be moved, tree commission.
Well, I think we need to also contact the tree commission and just say, okay, this is what we're looking at doing, is this going to negatively impact that tree, I mean?
Right, I don't know what about.
I think we need to talk to them and see, but perhaps they're, I mean, this could, I don't know, could it kill the tree?
If it's as close as it might be in this.
Yeah, I can't give you an idea how far away from it's going to be until they get here and lay it out on the ground.
Well, I would like to propose that we have at least, I think we should as a courtesy, at least reach out to the tree commission and say, we're considering this, or do you have thoughts and concerns about this affecting that tree? Do you have thoughts and concerns about this affecting that tree?
Michael's over tree commission, so he can handle that.
I mean, I don't know, I don't want to go do this and then that thing dies. I mean...
I'm going to have to email them.
Then let me ask you, if you're saying tree commission don't want to do it, are we telling charters we don't want?
No, 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 I'm not, I'm just saying...
We're moving forward here, we're not slowing.
Yeah, 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 I just, I'm like Mark Sue. I'm concerned about placement and how it's going to look when it's all said and done.
It's huge.
I mean, I know and that's, you know, I don't want us to hurry through it and then go, oh my God, what were you thinking?
We've created a large, we don't want to do that.
Can give land for this meeting?
To what purpose?
It's just a, each of your time.
I just wanted us all, on this, I wanted everybody to be knowing what I knew, moving forward.
Can we get a, can anybody do a visual, like a, like a 3D picture for us or something?
We don't have a 3D picture, but you were sent a video of other locations. Have you looked at that?
Yeah, but it's...
Every location has done it a little different.
A little different.
Harrisburg is super huge.
I've seen Harrisburg, theirs is massive. We wouldn't fit it, it would not fit.
Right, I just, I'm concerned about how that's going to look like we cram it all in there and then the tree dies.
Just moving forward, and I know we talked about this at some point, about the Kelly Pickler signs. I mean, what do we do with the Kelly? I mean, right now, we still have them, I know we have them at courthouse square, I know there's one down. It's almost in the field at the Alvaloa Business Center. I mean, it's literally in the corner there, right there at Trinity Place. And that one is so faded, you can't even see what it says unless you know that's what it says.
I didn't realize it was even there because I thought we took them all up at courthouse.
There is one right there and it's, as you're turning into Trinity.
Councils voted years ago to take them down. If that's still council's intention, we'll go get that one down too. What's your, your thought?
I thought the council brought it up and then one council member sort of talked to board at the council and not specifically voting to take it down.
Okay.
Now, I have a suggestion. When you, when you honor some living person like that, maybe a way out of that, if we take them down now, it looks like a slap in her face and we don't want to do that.
Well, I think we keep the one up at the courthouse square park, but it's recently been updated and painted.
But what we could do is have a policy, an ordinance, that when we do honor somebody like that, that it have a time limit on it. So you just don't want us to get yourself in a bind where you have to, you have to have these things forever.
Mr. Ferris, did we approve that policy?
We're doing those.
Have we already adopted a policy?
No, we have not, I don't think, adopted the policy. That's something that Stone is working on and last reported. I think it would be an update on, and some proposals at the November meeting.
We did have a time...
This is a walk-up, isn't this a walk-up thing?
Exactly.
Exactly, yes.
Yeah, walk-up thing, okay.
We did have some sort of time, probably, it might have been a state guideline because we had to remove all the Alvaloa High School...
We sure did.
State championship signs, you know, so that might have been a state guideline.
Yeah, that was a DMP.
But, and I'm just bringing up today, I just noticed it when I drove into the Trinity the other day, that it just, I mean, you can't even, I knew what it said, okay?
It wasn't that bad when she come down there.
Oh, yeah, I mean, but, but hearing you, they've already come down from one of the...
I know we brought several of them down. I thought the only one left was the one in the courthouse, courthouse square.
There is one, she is right, there is one down there.
Okay. Well, it's council in agreement, we should take that one down.
Yes.
Am I making that motion clear?
Do they belong to the city? Do they belong to the city or would the DDC put them there? Another one at the courthouse square park, DDC voted, three, four years ago voted to refurbish it and keep it.
I think our rest are the city for them.
Okay, that's fine.
Am I right? Mr. Randall, you were on DDC, get that down?
I think that they were sitting.
You're making a motion to get that down? The one in the Trinity play?
Well, do we need one if it's, if the rest of them are down and we just forgot to take that one down?
Chris said we didn't actually vote on it, so I think we should have. I thought that was on, I made a motion. But council members, I think the one down that is in this repair is at Trinity play. Second, council member Aldrich, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Public power this week, is this week, and we are doing some things. Do we know, I, I have seen what, and bless her heart, she's worked diligently to do this. On Wednesday, do you know if it's going on Wednesday?
I have no idea, I am tied up Wednesday, I haven't heard.
Does any, is anybody going Wednesday morning? Okay. Employee appreciation, I am tickled that whoever made that decision to do that, I mean, they did, we, we were told they did and I'm glad they did because we had probably 100 employees down at Rock, at City Lake Park on Friday night since we were not able to do the May appreciation, so I was real tickled about that. I still would say that we need to look at the HPC, the guidelines. I would continue to say to my fellow council members, we need to look at those and if you've got specific parts in there that you think we really need to look at, particularly with the commercial code, just in overview. If all that's going to happen downtown is ready to be happening downtown, we need to make sure that we're not holding that down, holding it back for whatever reason. So I just would challenge my fellow council members to, to look at that. And I've been seeing a whole lot of, um, job openings that come out. Tanya's been, I think, which is a good thing, but I saw one come out. Have we, what's the status, Kevin, on folks in your department? Have we got a commercial, have we got that?
I know that position's been built and it will start next Monday. I also have another position opening up that Monday, so we've got people coming and going.
So with the one that just came out, is one of our current employees that's leaving?
Yes.
Okay, and, but the new one has been hired...
That's correct.
To work on commercial code, et cetera, et cetera. Or do James Dawg?
Yes.
Okay. And I see that we still got, and our fire chief, is he here?
He's on the phone.
He's on the phone? I guess, I guess this would be to both Chief Doolin and to our fire chief. I know that last month, I, our last meeting, I asked about how many openings we had and where we are on that. Chief Doolin, you indicated that we had four that would be, that would be LET school and would start in January and have to do their training online or whatever with other people starting then. I guess I just want to know how we are, where we are right now with police and fire because I know that we had three maybe that started this week. And are we currently, even with retirements and resignations in the, how we're doing there for both police and fire? And I meant to email you all today and say, I was going to ask this tonight, but I got busy with other stuff. So I just think that I want us to stay on top of this. Thank you.
Sure. So we have...
I am here.
Oh, good, thank you.
We have four in school right now over at Community College, they'll be...
To answer your question.
Chief Doolin is talking right now, thank you very much.
They're set to graduate January 15th.
Okay.
So they'll be ready for field training. We just had one today start field training, he's already certified.
Yes.
Picked him up from another agency. And Friday, last Friday, we gave a conditional offer to a gentleman who is already certified as well. So they're, they're coming on board and we're hitting the ground running. We continue to accept applications, we are continuously doing background checks to the applicants and preparing them to get ready for the upcoming class in February at Stanley Community College. And then we're hoping to get some more that are already certified as well as the time goes on.
Because the ones that we sponsor, if I'm correct, in the BLAT, we, we start paying them when they're in school for the period of four or five months that they're in school.
Yes, ma'am, they're receiving, going to pay check throughout they're in school.
Right, gotcha. So with that, knowing what your, between now and January looks like, Chief, of any potential retirements or opening, how long are they, how long?
Only one retirement, that'll be in November. So when we bring on those four, we're picking up these two. I'm sure we're going to have at least four more in the next class. We should be very close to maxing out.
Okay, but again, the February is four months, is it school for four months?
Around, around four months, yes, ma'am.
So we'll get some able to work in January with field training?
Yes.
Then we'll get some more about June with field training, May or June?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just, does anybody else want to ask anything there? Thank you. If I might follow up, thank you, now to the fire chief. So where are we there now, knowing that, if the last time you made that report, I think we had a resignation or somebody leaving in the midst of that, but I guess, how are we now?
That's correct. We had three to start on shift, Sunday, Monday and Tuesday, to fill the vacancies that we had. We had one to leave on the second. We offered a letter, a, an employment letter, contingency letter to one, one candidate and he has accepted. So that will bring us up to full staff of 13 per shift, 39 for all three shifts.
So the one that we lost, that left on the second, did that person, did that person, um... Worked, strike that, I won't even ask that question. I just, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page, that, about, if, how many we, we know that we're about to lose and if we know that there's folks in the, that are trying to either move or to resign, I'm just trying, because I know how hard firefighters are to get, just like police officers and I don't want us to get caught and not be prepared. But you're saying we're okay?
I'm saying at the moment, with the letter, with the letter that we sent out and the acceptance, that we are currently full staff upon that acceptance.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions, council? Thank you, Chief Brandon, Chief Dillon. You have anything further to talk?
Good night, your honor.
Mr. Brandon?
In the last decade of the 19th century, the railroads came to Alvaloa and ushered in a building of factories, bringing in the textile industry that eventually resulted in many thousands of employees. And it stayed strong for almost 100 years and provided a strong economy for our city. We know what happened to that, but recently we've seen the coming of Pifer and, and I've never experienced in my lifetime excitement about what's going on in the city of Alvaloa as I've seen in these last short time. Problem, temporary. I had three of the Pifer students in the store today, we were talking. None of the three were able to find housing in, in Alvaloa. I talked to a real estate agent and they're aware of it. And, and then I was pleased that I could tell those three students about what's going on and the excitement continues because when you look at the, how the building going on in our city right now with, with what's going on on First Street, the Second Street building and then another one that, that is underway, it looks like we're going to be able to take care of that for, for some time to come. But the students were happy, they love the town, even though they're having to commute in here from, from outside. But I, to add to that, my own personal excitement, I'm tickled to death with that alley, Rog, behind the store and watching, watching those city workers get hold of that thing and that they run into some weird stuff back there, but they've handled it extremely well. And I'll, I'll tell you guys, when you, when you drive by on First Street, you look at that alley, it's going to look good. I'm tickled to death with, with what's happening there. So I, I just, it seems like every week I get more excited about what's going on here and I hope all of you share that same, same excitement that I have. Thank you.
That's all. Council, I entertain a motion that would go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A, 3 and 4, consult with the city attorney and economic development.
Somebody.
Motion by councilman Aldrich, second by councilmember Whitley, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.